Almost 5:30. We'll wait just a couple minutes. Okay, so Michelle and Maureen, as far as the survey goes, how do we share those results with this group?
So once I end the polling, the results should show for everyone. So I would say maybe halfway through, we can encourage everybody who's on, if they haven't already, to go ahead and take the poll. And then we can just, when we decide it's a good cutoff time, I'll go ahead and end it.
Perfect. Okay. Well, I'm going to go ahead and get started. I'm Christina Turner, the city manager. And I'm going to make some remarks, some of which I shared last night at the council meeting, but I thought that this group would want to hear. And then what we're going to do next is I want everyone to meet each of our department heads, and then we will open up Q and A. And so with that, some of the different things that I want to share first, this week is dispatchers week or telecommunications week. And so it's just a shout out to our dispatchers who answer the phone in your time of need. They work long hours and do a lot of hard work, and so we're just very thankful for them. As far as the census goes, that last night I announced that in Morgan Hill, we have so far a 58% response rate, and that is higher than California's at 45, the county's at 55%, Gilroy's at 48, and San Jose's at 53. So once again, we're at 58%. We were able to get a grant, and so that's allowed us to help with some outreach. And we have a lot of different creative ways that we're working on trying to reach the harder to reach population. So as far as COVID updates, I wanted to share a few things. One of the items is in the way, by way of budget. So at last night's meeting, we introduced a memo that I shared with the council of community related to the fiscal impacts of COVID-19. And as you can imagine, the impacts are very significant. And the memo went into the different revenue categories. And all in all, if we look at the rest of this current fiscal year, which ends in June, and we look at next year and the year after, it's about $12 million for the negative for the city of Morgan Hill. And so right now, we're in the midst of putting out our budget documents. So we will send out what's called our recommended budget tomorrow, and we'll review that with the council of community next Wednesday. So that's going to have some of the changes as a result of COVID-19, but not near what needs to happen in order to have our expenditures match up with our revenues. And so our leadership team and our budget team is working hard at trying to figure out, okay, what can we do right now to mitigate some of the losses that we're going to be experiencing? And then what are we going to do in the mid to the long term? And so once again, next week, council will have the intro next Wednesday, and then a couple other opportunities on April 30, which is going to be another Thursday night like this. We're going to have a community budget workshop. And so that's going to allow us to talk through what's in our budget, what's not in our budget, and then allow time for you to engage with us on our budget and give input. In addition to that, on May 15, we'll have a council workshop, nine to three, the Friday, on the budget. And then the plan is to have council adopted in June. And by between now and June, we'll have other budget reductions that we'll bring forward that would be part of the adopted budget. Few other items. One is, we sent out to the community today through email blast, and I shared it yesterday at the council meeting, is a list of what all of our leadership and teammates have been doing during this shelter in place. And it's both things that are kind of, you know, been done and things that we're doing. And so as you get to be introduced to each of our leadership teammates, they'll share one, maybe two items with you of things that their department has been up to. Another category by way of COVID is we've been working hard on lobbying and advocating for funding, both at the state and the federal level. We're, it's unfortunate that for our population size because we don't qualify for certain types of funding because we're under 50,000 in population. And so because of that, we don't get some of the funding that other cities, even Gilroy, our neighbor, receives. And so we're trying to advocate to get some of that funding. So we've been lobbying in that area. In addition to that, I just wanted to announce that we also are doing a roundtable series through our economic development team. We had our last one was done on Friday. It was a financial resources one. And then this Friday, we're doing one on tourism. Encourage you to go to our website, check that out. Lot of good information. Our website has a wealth of information for residents, for businesses, all the resources that are available right now. I also wanted to announce a couple other things. At last week's town hall, I had announced that the county's dashboard had been updated for reporting the cases by city. And when they initially rolled it out, I had mentioned that we weren't listed, which the legend said that that meant we had somewhere under 10 cases. Well, shortly thereafter, Morgan Hill was listed, and we, I think at that time, it was, I believe, 24 cases. And we're now up to 31 cases in Morgan Hill. And that's available by link from our website, or you can go directly to the county dashboard. We are working on departmental videos, so hopefully you've seen those on Facebook and otherwise. But each of our city council members have done a video. And now we're also doing our leadership teammates. There's one, our city attorney, Don Markin, has posted one. Our chief of police, Shane Palsgrove, has posted one, and more to come. Few additional items. One is, we put into effect a rent freeze order last week. So that is basically that landlords cannot increase rent from what it was at March 1st. And that's effective immediately, and that goes until 60 days post lifting of the shelter in place. And so that's been ratified by our city council. That was done last night. And then I wanted to mention that Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority has rolled out what they're doing during the COVID, and many of our residents and businesses have Silicon Valley Clean Energy as their provider. And so they're maintaining their 4% discount. They've set up a $10 million relief fund. And then they have a solar and storage project underway. So with that, the next phase of this is you're going to be able to meet our leadership team. And so first, I'm just going to go down the list. Michelle Bigelow, if you would introduce yourself and your department and what you've been up to.
Hi, everybody. Michelle Bigelow, if I can say my own name, council services and records management. We have been working hard on our website as a part of the communications and engagement team. And we have been facilitating many, many Zoom meetings for platforms such as our open town halls like we're doing right now, our council meetings and our commission meetings, our business roundtables with our economic development team. And we are implementing electronic document routing for signature so that we can keep our city business moving as we are mostly working from home.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, Maureen.
Hi, everyone. Maureen Tobin, communications and engagement director. And Michelle and I have been working very closely together, trying to keep the community updated and informed. Like she mentioned, we've been updating the website, trying to make sure it's an awesome resource for you for everything that's out there. We understand that there's an awful lot of information, sending regular weekly and sometimes, you know, several times a week, updates in relation to what's going on with the COVID-19 shelter in place and any new information related to those orders. We also, right at the beginning, established a virtual call center. So we have two individuals who are able to work from home, but still receive all the calls that you may have coming in. And we also have a few others of us who can log on and may not get the call, but can hear what the call is about and respond either by text or by a phone call back.
Thank you, Maureen. Chris? And Chris, you're muted.
There he is. I'm sorry about that. I was trying to get back to the home screen to unmute myself. Very difficult. Chris Gianni, I'm the public services director. So I oversee the community services department and engineering and utilities department for the city. So that's our recreation programs, as well as all the maintenance wastewater water and our capital projects group. So I just wanted to share something that might be interesting to people. So our maintenance team and our teams in utilities, making sure our water keeps running and our wastewater keeps flowing. We did something really early on to help ensure sustainability to provide those essential services. Most of those employees typically work out of our corporation yard off of Eads Court, which many of you have seen. But if you go by Eads Court these days, there's not too many people there. And the reason is, we've segmented our workforce into various areas throughout the city to make sure if someone did contract the virus, it wouldn't bring our whole team down, and we can continue to provide those services. So you may see some interesting equipment at the community cultural center, aquatic center, CRC, where we're housing much of the equipment that runs our city infrastructure day to day, so that we can make sure that we can provide those services on an ongoing basis. So if anyone was wondering why you see a giant vector truck out front of the aquatic center, there's your reason. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. City Attorney, Don.
So Christina already mentioned the rent freeze order that we enacted. Couple other things. Primarily what we're doing is just advising our city teammates on things like the county's orders and how to interpret those and how to enforce those. And then really just making sure that we keep the city going and that we're, contracts are flowing because, you know, residents are still relying on us, and we still need to support our residents at our businesses in the best we can, even though we can't all be in the office together. And that's really what we're doing.
Thank you, Don. Tony?
Hi. During this time, I've been ensuring that our city's environmental programs continue as planned, particularly in the areas of energy and solid waste. Last night, we did present an item to the city council for the annual solid waste rate adjustment, which is a very minor adjustment this year of about 67 cents per household per month, ensuring that a recology continues to maintain their operations and cleaning and making sure our community remains clean. That's about it.
Great. Thank you. Finance Director, Datwin.
Hello, everyone. Datwin, finance director. We know in the past month and a half or closer, most of us in finance have been working at home. Even though we work at home, we still plan on to release a budget tomorrow. And the team had been working hard with a lot of folks, tried to get the information in, expansion appropriation and all the revenues. As you can hear that Christina mentioned that we had some projected revenue loss. So we did work out a lot of consultants, working with experts and with the finance experts and all the internal teammates to come up the best assumption we could. And again, the budgets to plan to be released tomorrow as scheduled.
Thank you, Dat. Fire Chief, Jake Hess.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Jake Hess, your fire chief. Really, we have been adapting to COVID for the main reason to make sure we have our fire teammates available for public. We've created an incident action plan, which is a fancy term for how we deal with this pandemic. So that's how we decontaminate, coming back from calls. We take temperature checks of the troops, the fire teammates. Every day, they come on shift, and then throughout the day, they monitor themselves, and they were able to report that information. As you can imagine, the fire teammates don't do anything without each other. So social distancing as a firefighter is next to impossible. So we've really had to kind of heighten our decontamination and just common sense approach to living with three folks in a firehouse. And then going from different station to station as well. We've been working with the city EOC to make sure that we have proper personal protective equipment, cash for the city and city teammates. We've worked closely with EOC director Ponse on that in the county and the state as well. And then more importantly, we, part of our pandemic plan and incident action plan, we have come up with multiple ways to adjust our response if we are faced with a significant downturn or drop in our workforce. And so that is actually part of the Santa Clara County Fire Chiefs' plan, where we literally would lean on each other. So we have that in our back pocket. Most of the agencies have been pretty robust and haven't had folks that are out sick. I've had 23 fire teammates tested and zero cases positive. So that's the end of report.
Thank you. Economic Development Director, Edith Ramirez.
Hey, everyone. The economic development team is mostly John Lang and myself with a part-time fellow, Olivia Nunez, under the leadership of Leslie Little. The economic development work that we have been doing are sort of like in three buckets. One, obviously, economic development, how do we support the businesses that are struggling right now through this new pandemic? And for that, we are doing, collecting information, trying to deploy that information in newsletters that hopefully are a little bit more digestible for the amount of information that is out there and the roundtables, as Christina mentioned. And the next one is tomorrow, 10:30, with the California Travel Association to really talk about, can travel help the economy recover? So looking forward to that conversation. The other two buckets that we try to support even from home, one of them is telecommunications. John Lang is leading the effort on beginning the conversations on a new contract for broadband for the city facilities and how that potential contract can provide not just connectivity for the city facilities, but can that connectivity be expanded to neighborhoods and business districts? So that's one area. And then the other area is transportation. Yesterday, at the council meeting, we talked about high-speed rail that is issuing their environmental impact report. So we are getting ourselves as a city ready with the right resources to respond to that environmental impact report, which is scheduled to come out on April 24. And we have, as a community, 45 days to provide that response. If anybody is interested to submit any comments to the authority or to the city regarding that project, we would be happy to convey those to the authority. But the window is during the EIR to provide that response. Thank you.
Thank you. Harjot.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Harjot Sanga, Assistant City Manager. As Christina mentioned, you know, we've been participating on various regional calls, trying to keep a pulse on all the COVID-19 updates. We're working to identify and advocate for funding opportunities, both at the county, state, and the federal level. We've been also implementing procedures and/or processes such as, you know, virtual credit card processing or other items to support our teammates that are working from home that need to process those payments and so forth. And lastly, working hard to, you know, ensure we're tracking all of our city expenses as they relate to COVID. So ultimately, when we're out of this, you know, pandemic, we're able to submit some claims to the female or other sources of revenues or reimbursements that are possible. And last but not least, working really hard to get, you know, with our finances, to get our budget document out to the community.
Thank you, Harjot. Development Services Director, Jennifer Carmen.
Good evening, everybody. I oversee our planning, building, and land development engineering functions within the city. Also, as Edith said, under the leadership of Assistant City Manager Leslie Little. What we've done so far to respond to COVID was we've gone to a virtual public counter. Because city hall is closed, you can't come in and ask questions directly. But you can email any of the divisions. We will be accepting applications via those emails as well. All of those can be found on the website under each division title. And we'll be processing behind the scenes. We have full staff working at home. And as things will come in, we'll be doing what we can at home to get applications moving forward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Assistant City Manager, Leslie Little.
Good evening. I apologize for not having a video, but I will get a new computer because I'm going to turn mine in. It's an old, old laptop here from the city, and it will have a camera in it. So maybe next week, I'll have a live camera. You already heard from Edith and from Jennifer. The other portions of our umbrella include code enforcement, housing, and a number of other related activities, including long-range planning. And so I think what I'll do is, since Jennifer and Edith have talked about their individual areas, just highlight what housing has been doing in particular. And then I did want to give a shout out to our building department because we still have inspectors in the field. And similar to Chris Gianni's discussion, we've had to figure out how to deploy people safely out in the field and keep certain essential activities moving forward. So those folks have done a really stellar job of figuring out how to work remotely, still check in, still move forward with those critical projects, especially in our public right-of-way and those housing projects that are considered essential construction activities and kept them moving. Also, our code enforcement officer is working remotely and trying his hardest to work with folks to just maintain sometimes now new kinds of activities as well as typical compliance issues in the past. But working remotely, handling somewhere close to 200 and some cases already this month. So shout out to them, too. In housing, this is someplace that with a very tiny staff, I think we've done some really big things. As the city manager mentioned, the city adopted a rent freeze ordinance last week. And along with some of those, as well as the county staying place orders and implementation related to evictions, et cetera, our housing team has done a fabulous job of notifying apartment managers, RV park owners, mobile home park owners, assisted living facilities, of all of the different laws and restrictions that protect all of our residents and that impact them. So they've done a yeoman's job of doing that. They've also reached out to all of our faith community and keep regular contact with those who are trying to deliver community services through nonprofits in Morgan Hill. So it's an ever-evolving job, and every day is something new. We respond to a lot of folks who have just general inquiries about what their situation is and do a lot of directing traffic to a lot of the things that Maureen has placed on the website, which is a tremendous repository of information and just, you know, contact links.
Great. Thank you, Leslie. HR Director, Michael Horta.
So good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Horta. I'm the HR director. And so our team has been busy implementing the Family First Coronavirus Response Act policy, which encompasses our emergency paid sick leave and our Emergency FMLA Expansion Act that our teammates may qualify for. But above that, we've also been working hard to keep our lines of communications open with our teammates, ensuring that they have the resources they need to get through this current situation, but also to answer any questions they may have. And so I'm grateful for my team and that we've been working really hard to provide resources and reach out to our teammates. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Chief of Police.
Good evening, everybody. Shane Palsgrove. Our team is doing an outstanding job and fighting crime. We've had some big cases and have interrupted some crime rings that will be hitting the newspaper shortly. I couldn't be prouder of our patrol team working real hard at night. Our detective bureau is working from home. They're going to be the relief team for our patrol teams if somebody were to be exposed from the COVID-19 virus. And while at home, they are still putting together some fantastic cases. Internet crimes are up by 400% in 2019. And our detectives are doing an outstanding job putting together cases with the task forces up in San Jose. And in between all this, they are still finding time to go out and do birthday visits, which I think is lifting a lot of spirits for our patrol guys as well as the community. We have responded to about 147 cases for shelter in place violations. Graffiti is up, and we're painting about half a dozen to a dozen graffiti locations each day over the past week. And we are still in the process of hiring a couple more bodies. So we're staying pretty busy.
Thank you. And I believe we have covered everyone, if not shout out right now. Okay, Michelle, would now be a good time to tally up some full results.
We have 26 of our 53 participants have taken the poll. So we want to give people another five minutes. If they're interested, please click the poll at the bottom of your screen and take the poll if you haven't already, and then we can share those results.
Perfect. Okay. So now is the Q and A portion of this. And so you can go ahead and in the chat feature, write your question. And I think that we so far have one question. And so I'll go ahead and read them off and either respond or ask a teammate to respond. The first question, I just saw on Facebook, people protesting at Tenet in Monterey about the shelter in place. Is the city or police department doing anything about this to clarify people might be hurt or re... Chief?
Yes, we did find out about that, and an officer went out there and contacted the group. The group was protesting the stay-at-home order, and they were out there for a short period of time and then dispersed.
Okay. Yeah, and just, you know, by way of reminder, you know, we at the city, you know, are under the county's orders. Our chief of police, as well as the sheriff, is responsible for enforcing the order. Okay, so go ahead and enter your questions in the chat feature. What are some ways to help our seniors or other community members that may be in need? I'm going to ask Chris to just briefly talk about our senior lunch program, how that has transitioned, and then any other ways that we can assist our seniors right now.
Yeah, so we are at the Centennial Recreation Senior Center. We provide, we're partnered with the YMCA and actually the county to provide a daily lunch, Monday through Friday, nutrition program. And the number of people participating there has actually increased. It's over just about 100 a day of people, seniors picking up lunches there. And we're actually, for me, the seniors who can't get down there, we're doing delivery of the lunches for the people that have been there. So we're continuing that program. And then a limited number of our team members from the senior center are doing well check calls on the regular seniors that attend the senior center. The shelter in place order does make it somewhat difficult to say, how can I individually help? You'll see on many things on Nextdoor where people are offering the You'll see on many things on Nextdoor where people are offering to help their neighbors, which is great, and people are taking advantage of that. For us to help facilitate that, it's a little bit difficult because there's, you know, vetting process and everything like that to set up a formal program. And then one of the things that has made it even more difficult, even during the lunches, is many of our volunteers that volunteer at the senior center are actually seniors themselves and they're in that population that's at a higher risk. So we asked them not to volunteer for their own safety as well. So we've done that. And then I think, I think as far as helping the seniors, a lot of the same things that are helping the general public. We have lots of volunteers that have been helping at the food giveaways that have been done at multiple sites, helping to donate to different causes that are getting food to people in need. So I think those are a lot of the opportunities that you see that are in general helping the community are the same ones that are helping our seniors.
Thank you, Chris. Question says, are questions being answered by the mayor? So tonight, I'm fielding the questions as your city manager and then the leadership team is assisting in those responses. Our next council meeting is next Wednesday, April 22nd at 7:00. Primary topics are the budget, an update to our infrastructure report, and a couple other items.
Christina, Christina, one thing I think maybe not all members of the public can understand is that we have a council manager form of government in which our city council, including the mayor, sets the high-level policies, but it's really you and the rest of the team that is responsible for the day-to-day management of the city. So those questions that in other communities might be answered by the mayor would be actually be the questions that you would answer.
Thank you for providing that clarification for the group. You mentioned that building inspectors are still doing inspections. Are there only specific inspections or can I go online and schedule any inspection for an open permit? I'm going to ask Jennifer Carmen to respond to that.
Thank you, Christina. We're only allowed to inspect those developments or projects that are allowed to proceed under the shelter-in-place. So it's really only affordable housing and certain other resident residential projects that are under contract to occupy. So we can't accept single-family homes or, you know, the remodels, repairs unless it's a safety issue at this time.
Thank you. Does the rent freeze affect single-family homes or commercial rent? And so it is a residential rent freeze order. Dawn, do you want to add anything else to that?
No, so it's, it's single-family homes, multifamily, but not commercial rent. We haven't had complaints about commercial rent increases the same way we have with some of the, with some of the residential rent increases. So, but any residential rent right now is frozen at the March 1st rate.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Go ahead and put in your questions or any specific topics that you would just want to hear more information about. We'd be happy to share more.
Christina, this is Michelle. We have 30 people have responded to the poll out of our 55 participating, 56. Do you want me to go ahead and close it?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so the first question, of the many things the city has been doing during the shelter-in-place, which do you appreciate the most? We have several different options there and it looks like we had our highest scoring one is the virtual town hall meetings. Yay! Good, so we decided to do those. We're going to be doing these weekly. And as I mentioned, the April 30th date will actually be focused just on budget and we plan to do this while the shelter-in-place is in effect. Next, regular email updates from the city. Yes, so we have our 411 that we do weekly. And then above and beyond that, we've been sending out COVID updates, kind of, you know, as we have significant updates reports. So that happens to be every two or three days. And then those are followed by virtual city council meetings, COVID-19 website, police department, drive-by for birthdays. And then it looks like after that, Business Resiliency Roundtable, and then Business Resource Website. And also in between those last two, video messages from the council and leaderships. Okay, what general fund revenue sources expected to be impacted the most from COVID-19? And this group is absolutely correct. It is sales tax. And so we're going to see a significant reduction in sales tax, you know, as our residents and visitors are not, you know, out there spending money. And so we're going to see a significant decrease. Next to that is recreation revenue and TOT. Yes, our hotels right now are at an occupancy rate of about 20%, which is significantly reduced from where it's been. And then property tax, that last one there, we do think that we will see some decrease than we were originally projecting. But property tax, there's about an 18-month lag from when we're experiencing an economic downturn to when we actually feel the impact in less property taxes. And so over, I think, two years and a couple months, just shy of a million dollars from where our projections were. What is the first thing you want to do after restrictions are lifted? Okay, so it looks like visit friends and family is first, as we hope it all would be. And then dine out, yeah, a lot of people are anxious to go sit at a restaurant and enjoy that experience, to go to the beach. That was permitted for a while and now Santa Cruz County has actually said that, you know, no one can be on the beach. And then watch a live sports game. And the last one there with no votes is attend a concert. And then our last question, what have you enjoyed about sheltering in place? And so it looks like there was a tie between spending more time with family and working on projects around the house. And then a couple other winners there, look, well, life at a little slower pace for sure for many. Getting out and walking or exercising more was a tie with having more time to be creative. And then we have working in your garden. And then a few others listed there, reading more books, catching up on TV. Great, that was fun. Thank you, guys. Okay, so going back to the questions. Why would the mayor ask the residents of Morgan Hill to walk their neighborhoods when there is a stay-at-home shelter-in-place order? Okay, so the shelter-in-place order does say that it is okay to get out and exercise. So that means walking, that could mean jogging while maintaining social distancing. As far as our parks, though, we've closed playgrounds and those sort of areas, but it's perfectly fine to go out and go for a walk with your dog or those that you're sheltering in place with, but not to go in with groups, basically.
And I think Christina, oh, Jake, want to say something first? I was, I was going to say, I think the idea is that we can be, if we know we have neighbors who might have needs, we can check on those neighbors without entering their physical space. So it's not, the idea would be not to, not to go into other people's houses, which you should not be doing. But if you can check on your neighbors, you think, you know, if you know you have neighbors who might have needs and you can help with those needs, it would be a nice thing to be able to help them with those needs without entering their physical space.
Yeah, really good point. Thank you. Okay, so thank you to police, fire, and medical personnel. Absolutely. What would you happen to know if summer will take place this summer? Oh, that's a good question. And if only we had a crystal ball.
There was a clarification later, Christina.
Oh, there is? Okay. Summer school, okay. So from what I've heard, more than likely, it's looking like it'll be online learning. That's not, you know, formalized yet, but that's sort of what it's looking like at this point. Any other updates from this group on that? Okay.
Christina, this is Michelle. I wanted to, if I could, just jump in quickly back
Yeah.
checking in on your neighbors or how you can help seniors. One neat tool that is out there is, well, there's two. So we have Silicon Valley Strong, which was set up by Mayor Sam Lucardo for San Jose. So folks that are interested in volunteering can go and give their information and then they will contact you to see if you're available to help with the different volunteer opportunities. And second is for those folks that are on nextdoor.com, which is a social media platform for neighborhoods. They have a really neat tool where you can go in and if you don't already have an account, you can create one for free. It's really easy. They've created a help map where you can offer help and folks that need help can mark it on the map. And so you can actually see in your neighborhood, residents that might be willing to go to the grocery store for you or help you in some way, or folks that may need help. So you may have neighbors who have mobility issues, who may not have family that can help them. So I just encourage people to go in and check that out. It's a really neat tool. And it's one way that folks can put that information out and get a response. So just looking around City Hall, there's a few folks that have said, I'm here to check on neighbors. I'm happy to FaceTime with you. I can pick up groceries. So just wanted to share that out there.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, the next question is, why would the mayor ask the residents of Morgan Hill to understand where there are vulnerable neighborhoods and to identify them? This is a privacy violation. So I think there are a couple comments made during one of the council meetings. And I think that the spirit of what was being talked about was sort of the question that was asked about, you know, helping seniors and helping other people. So it's really trying to be a good neighbor and, and, you know, trying to help those that are in need. You know, so if, you know, if we can help, you know, provide food, put them in touch with resources, I think that was the spirit of what was being shared. Anything else from the team on that? No, okay. Can Morgan Hill staff teach other organizations to run a Zoom meeting as well as these virtual meetings are being run? Thank you. If you're aware of organizations that need assistance, I would have my great experts, Michelle Bigelow and Maureen Tobin, mentor them. All right, let's see here. The state is establishing a multi-step process to return to normal. Would there be any steps unique to Morgan Hill as we return to normal? Yeah, that's a really good question and our teammates here have started to have those questions because I think, you know, what we're, you know, hearing is that at some time soon, the shelter-in-place order is going to be lifted, but we're not going to be going back to life as we know it for quite a while and, you know, meaning different standards of how we operate. You might be getting emails from businesses or dental offices that, you know, that you go to saying, you know, here's how things are going to work when we're back in business. And so I don't know if any of those are specifically unique to Morgan Hill, but if we dive in, you know, I could think about Chris and Chris is, has already been, you know, thinking about what does recreation look like in Morgan Hill? We have a robust recreation program with all of our facilities. And so he and his team are already being, you know, thoughtful about what that might look like. Chris, do you want to mention a couple words there?
I think you covered most, just about everything, Christina. It's just really difficult right now to predict what will happen. What we, what we aren't expecting to happen is the order to lift and everything to go back to normal as there's going to be higher requirements, obviously, as different parts of the order are lifted and some are retained. And then there's going to be higher expectations on different things. And we're just going to have to, you know, listen to what the community says is important as far as recreation services go and try and be responsive to that because we'll know people will have changed expectations. So we're going to, we're going to try and adapt and meet the needs of the community as best we can.
Great. Edith Orr and Leslie, any comments that you, either of you wants to make as it relates to businesses and returning to normal? I know you both have experienced in your past dealing directly with it.
I'm happy to jump in. I don't know if Leslie is going to unmute. If she is, I'll wait. So both Leslie and I, we worked in San Jose after 9/11 and experienced, at that time, there was quite a bit of lag for people to feel comfortable to come out and, and be out with people, wondering how this is the same or different. What does that mean to the space that we call our downtown, that is the heart of the community? What does that look like after the aftermath of this? And if we have dark spots, you know, vacant storefronts, you know, how do we create life and make people feel safe? I was in an interesting call today with other cities that, thinking through, the restaurant industry is really, was one of the industries that is taking a really significant hit. Not only they have to reinvent their business models, but coming out of this, they're going, it is possible that there might still be the distancing between tables, right? So we don't know, even once we come out, how is this going to play out? And how can restaurants maintain their rents when they're not serving as many people? And again, it's about reimagining those, those business models that they had. So the conversation that I was in today talked a lot about trying to continue to promote parklets because they're going to need the extra space to separate people, trying to create safe places for people to walk and have a little bit more extra elbow room. And even other cities bringing back things like the road diet, where instead of just parklets, just, just do the road diet and really provide that real estate for folks to, businesses to be able to survive and come back. So I think that this is a conversation that at least on the economic development side, we're very much interested in seeing what other communities are doing. I know that even right now, some other communities, I was in a, in a different call for another purpose and this person was saying how in Oakland, you know, as they're trying to create more elbow room for people to be out and about, they're trying to kind of find ways to kind of close down some streets that may not be needed. And then that way you kind of just create more public space, if you will. So for me, even though this is an incredibly challenging time for all of us, I really do appreciate the amount of learning and growth and innovation that is happening and that is forcing all of us at a very personal level to, to just think creatively.
Thank you, Edith. And you mentioned about the closing of the streets and that's actually one of the questions. So if we skip to that, do we shut down some streets from being used by cars to allow more space for people that are walking, running, biking? Chris, what do you think about that question?
Sure, and I've had a lot of conversations with other cities as well on the street closures. And the Oakland street closures, actually, they're not closing full streets at this time. They're closing streets to, through traffic to reduce the through, the through traffic that's going through the streets. So it's to the residents that live in those streets only. And when you, but when you think about like what Oakland's doing there, Oakland is an older city, the bigger city format, where they have really a big section of grid streets, like all crossing each other and everyone's kind of running through that grid and that's how traffic flows. In Morgan Hill, our streets aren't really designed like that. We have a lot of cul-de-sacs. So putting the signs up at the end of a residential street to say residential traffic only when it's going into a cul-de-sac anyways, 100% of the traffic's going in there. There, there is, there would be an opportunity on a limited number of streets to, to really look at that. So we've been talking about this and discussing this and our police chief's been involved in this conversation as well. We've really been looking at, are, is there, is there a need, as there is in some of the other areas, to do that on our residential streets? And we're not necessarily seeing the traffic volumes or the traffic speeds just because of the layout of the street to say, we really think that's a good idea to go forward with right now. On the other hand, some cities have looked into, hey, so we, let's do a full closure of the street. Like, let's say, let's close Monterey Road down between Main Avenue and Dunn Avenue and let's just close it for pedestrians. But doing something like that is, is not in line with the spirit of the order either because that's creating basically an event for people to come down and hang out together in a closed street, street area. So we are looking at opportunities and we are talking as a team to say, are there good opportunities to do these street closures? But we, we haven't been sold that it's the best bet for the city at this point, but we're, we're still open to the conversation for sure. And, yeah, and we'll continue to listen to residents that bring, bring up those ideas.
Thank you, Chris. The comment, thank you for maintaining the soap and water in the outdoor hand washing station. Let's see here. One side effect of the shelter-in-place order is a significant reduction of pollution. What can we do to continue that reduction? Anthony Ulo.
Sure, Christina. Of course, the majority of the reduction is in the air pollution. And so we shut down the economy and I'll stay home and the air is cleaner. I don't think we want to do that as a long-term pattern. So a couple of things. One is, I think we can all One is, I, I think we can all agree that the work world is going to be different in the future and there is going to be less commuting. I think this, one maybe positive effect of this is people seeing that they don't have to travel so much to meetings because you can stay home or stay at your office and not go to another location. So I do, I do think there'll be a permanent reduction in vehicle traffic. And that is about half of the community, our community's carbon footprint. And of course, almost 100% of the air pollution. So I, I don't know if we have a real key towards this being a long-term trend, but certainly there'll be some probably easing on, on air pollution in the future because of this.
And then it says, in the broader question beyond reduction of pollution, how can we change the normal we return to? So we've touched on that. Does anyone else have a comment on that? How we can change the normal we return to? That's a question that we're going to be, you know, asking ourselves as we, as we get to the place where the shelter-in-place order is going to be lifted.
I think one thing is, you know, now we're a month into it and we're getting over the shock. And the, there are, and one of the questions on the poll is, what are the good things that have come out of this? And so I think that's one of the things we can start thinking about now that we're sort of now in our normal pattern we're going to be in for a while is what, what parts of this do we want to replicate? I think more working from home, less long commutes. You know, employers finding ways to allow their employees to work from home is going to be a, a positive thing that comes out of this. I think we're, we miss the human interaction, but there are some positive things that now that we're sort of adapting to this, we might be able to bring out of it.
Yeah, just along the lines of working from home, you know, local governments in general aren't set up, you know, to work from home, you know. We, the information technology is just, you know, not in place. And so it was a pretty big effort to get to the place where we could get people working efficiently from home and getting our virtual private network, you know, up, you know, so that we can securely work from home. And, you know, and so it's something that I think many local governments thought that they would never see, you know, having most teammates, you know, work from home. So it's been, it's been really neat to see. Okay, neighbors are not outside due to the shelter-in-place being the neighbors understandable, but not when there is a shelter-in-place. Neighbors walking the neighborhood, engaging with residents could obstruct the slowing of the virus, slowing of the COVID-19 virus spread. Yeah, I mean, that, I think the point there is that we have to, when we go outside and we leave our homes, we have to be very, very cautious, you know. And so the county isn't requiring, but they're recommending facial masks, not, you know, the medical grade, not the N95s, but rather, you know, even if it's a bandana, whether it's, you know, just any sort of face covering in the public, you know. And so having that, maintaining, you know, the social distancing is really important. So thank you for that comment. Any other questions before we conclude for this evening? Hey, well, thank you for joining us. The next, the, the next opportunity to join is for the council meeting next Wednesday. You're invited to that, April 22 at 7:00. So thank you again and have a good evening. Take care.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.